All right, I'm going to call to order the January 20th regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 10. If you would like to speak during the public comments, please fill out one of the comment cards that was right there outside the door that you came in. They will be picked up after the superintendent's report. And now, if you would please stand and join us as our newest board member, Sean Colley, leads us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for braving the freezing cold. And these, they're not that bad, they're just really frozen and crunchy, but thank you all for making it out here tonight. Um, we are going to be skipping over our instructional highlight tonight. Our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Mr. Scott Haye, had an emergency that is keeping him away, so we will hopefully be scheduled this presentation to next month. Uh, with that, we will move right on to the Board of Education recognition, which I will turn over to Mr. Herbie since I have nothing to do with this.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And thanks for being flexible around Scott. He will be happy to get that presentation next month, for sure. But just wanted to say thank you, January is School of Recognition Month. And Sean, you've gone, oh, really? The first meeting, the first item? Are you getting something? Yes, you're getting something. Uh, but just, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of cabinet and our school community for the number of hours that you all volunteer. You know, we talked about a little bit about your giving us so much and taking away from your family. We definitely appreciate that. All the work that you do to develop the policies and then allow us as an administration to implement those policies and do the day-to-day work. So we definitely appreciate that. I personally appreciate the support that you've, you know, given me since I've been here, since July. It's been wonderful, but I do appreciate each of you. And your role is still very important. It's an opportunity to unify the community, and I think each of you take that very seriously. And I do appreciate that, and that's how I view this as well. So we do have some gifts for you, so I'm, I'm going to go ahead and give those to you. Nice little gift bags. On top of that, we have a sweet treat over there that the food service made for you all. And so I want to make sure that you go away with that. So I will be giving each of you a gift bag and just a way of saying thank you for all of the work that you do for the school community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. You might think I made these bags pretty, but it might have more to do with Val.
We know. Thank you very much.
You really did good. I, I, it's great, great.
Well, thank you for that. I know we're all here because we want to be here and we love volunteering our time in this way for the district, but recognition is always nice as well, so thank you. Oh, we will move on to the consent grouping now. Um, and are there any items that anyone would like to pull out for special consideration? All right, then can I please have a motion to approve consent grouping Items 6A1 through 6C6?
A motion that we, um...
Or maybe 6C7 now, I think there was one added late.
Okay, I'll, motion that we approve Items 6C1 through 6C7.
A second. You, okay, you added one in and I didn't get the update of where were that number of...
It was just a minute that didn't have the closed session listed, so it didn't add anything.
Oh, it didn't add, okay.
It just corrected the report.
Okay, all right, perfect. Then we will go on, and can we start with the, uh, Mallory? Uh, we will do the curriculum report, please.
Okay. Um, we covered it quite a lot at our meeting on Wednesday last week. We did have a update from our technology director, Susan Case. She detailed some purchases that the district has been able to make for schools in the way of technology as of late. Um, a couple of examples for you guys. Yodo players, which if you have kids, you might know what a yodo player is. You can listen to stories on them. You can make your own yodo cards with stories on them that then you put into the machine and then it will read it to you. They're pretty cool little machines for kids. Um, different VR headsets for middle school students. I know that they're using them in some other history classes to explore different civilizations that they are studying. Um, also professional grade equipment to be used at the high school level. For example, they purchased Farmbot for Northern Hills, Northern High School, sorry, where they use that in Project Next. 3D printers, Pocket Talk translators. So also technology for providing enhanced health and wellness. For example, they have some different rail applications and different diabetic monitors. So just a lot of really cool technology that the district is able to provide to our different schools. And some of this technology comes, is paid for from, a little bit from the district and then also the foundation. They sometimes kind of work in tandem for these purchases. Um, and then we heard from Kim Benantor. She provided some exciting updates about our junior kindergarten program for next year. As a reminder, this is an excellent option for our kids who have those late summer and fall birthdays and they miss that kindergarten birthday deadline, to really kind of try and capture those students and keep them here in the district once they're done with junior kindergarten and they're moving on to full-pledged kindergarten. Uh, she did reiterate that our junior kindergarten program is going to operate under a commitment to play-based learning and an emphasis on teaching both school and social skills so they are ready for that kindergarten the following year. Um, our community has demonstrated excitement about this new program as they have been asking for it for a few years now. So, the district is currently conducting interviews for the, for the teachers of the program. And there is a community informational meeting about that program this Wednesday night at the FAC. Um, I think the communication about this meeting has been very robust, very proactive. I've seen it a couple of different spots. Um, I know most of the schools are sending it home in their newsletters. It's been on the Facebook page, so I'm hopeful that they will get a great turnout for that. And interested families are going to be able to take tours of the buildings and the classrooms spaces in February. And then February, March, the district is going to open up registration and screening. And in May, the families will receive their placements for following fall. And then finally, John Gregory discussed some changes to the course catalog for our high school students. They are going to have scheduling coming up in the next few weeks. Um, so when changes, additions, or deletions are made to the course catalog, it is down with a steering committee made up of assistant principals, counselors, registrars, pupil accounting specialists, and the secondary service coordinator. So there are quite a few changes here. So some deletions that they are going to make are sculpture and ceramics from Central, drawing and painting from Central. Uh, and the reason for that is that they're going to add in Art 1, 2, 3, and 4 at Central. Um, they feel like that will capture more students and more of their interests because they can do not only sculpture and ceramics and also drawing and painting in those classes, but other things as well. They are also going to be deleting science of sports and games from Central. And then they're adding to Northern Marketing 2, and then they're adding AP Physics 1 to Central. And then a couple of things they're going to just revise. So their existing classes, but they're going to revise the name of them to better reflect what is actually happening in those classes. So in the Don boarding program at Northern, they are changing the Health class to High Performance Health, the Fitness for Life class to Board Sports, the Personal Finance class, just to finance skills, and the Marketing class to Small Business Marketing. And then there's a couple new course proposals. The first one is MLL English Language Arts. That's an ELA class for our multi-language learner students. Also, MLL Language Development. And then a change for our freshmen and sophomores in way, by the way, English. So adding pre-AP English 1 and pre-AP English 2, and then also honors pre-AP English 1. Um, not pre-AP English 2 because the, the idea would be that if you took pre-AP English 1, then the next year you would take AP Seminar. Also adding or looking to add in Chemistry 2. This will not be an AP class. It's a one semester elective with some deeper dives into different chemistry standards. So that is all of the different changes that are being made to the course catalog for our high school students. Um, and then last two small things. Assistant Superintendent Haye let us know that the district is in the very, very early stages of discussing the possibility of pulling together a committee on revamping elementary report cards. Again, this is the very beginning stages, so there will be more on that later. And then also, all the elementary schools are going to be hosting literacy nights this year for parents. Um, and those are going to be scheduled individually by each elementary school, although all be on a day at night just based on what works best for those individual school communities. That was our meeting.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to our finance report then. Dr. Michaud.
Okay. Quite a bit of work out of the business office the last month or two as well to discuss. As of the end of December, we're 50% of the way through our fiscal year, 35% of the way through our school year. Uh, bond construction updates, we're, we're mostly status quo. Uh, construction is moving ahead as expected in all of the different areas. Uh, the Central High School bidding, we'll talk about in a second, that is complete. Um, and so we've got some things to review and approve tonight. The Aquatic Center continues its design phase, hoping to bid that out in the summer. And then we know Northern Hills Middle School, 8 Elementary in Meadowbrook are in a design phase with construction to begin in 2026, ideally. So no real changes to what's been going on the last few months. I did want to bring up the operating millage, uh, which is some language that we'll continue to use for the next couple of months as we look toward a ballot proposal in May. We've had a number of proposals and school-related things on the ballots the last couple of years, so the operating millage is, is a, is a big foundation of our funding as part of the foundation allowance that the state grants us, that per pupil number. A lot of that, or a chunk of that is expected to come from local tax levying, uh, and that's what makes this operating millage. So this has been in place since Proposal A in 1994. This is not a new thing, it's not an increase, it's not a new ask. Um, and importantly, this is the milit, or the tax that gets levied on non-homestead properties in Forest Hills. So not the majority of us with primary homes, but business properties, second homes, those kinds of things. Um, so we'll, we'll talk much more about it. Obviously, it's vital piece of our funding. Um, and so we'll want to make sure our community understands that that's on the ballot and what that goes for. Um, so more from the district, and we'll be talking about it more as we get closer. But just wanted to start that conversation officially, as that will be later this spring. And then the last item that we, that was a, was a fun item. We were presented a check, which is always a good thing. Um, our architecture firm partners, Tower Pinkster, something that they do essentially for us at the conclusion of their projects. They have the ability to apply, to receive some dollars for completing the project as, as planned and in efficient and green type of, of ways. Um, and that's money that they are allowed to kind of keep for them for a job well done, and they go ahead and they pass that on to the district. Um, basically just as a, as a, a good deed that they like to do to support our schools. Um, so they did this last year, as, as we'll remember too, and they just presented us a check of $55,000 that came from that for completing work over at Collins and Thornapple Elementarys. So that was very cool to receive from them, and we thank them as always for their partnership and what they do for us. And of course, we're given some dollars back. Which brings us to our action items. The first one is the bids that went out for the Central High School renovations. That was sent out in December in 22 different bid categories. That total, in total, received 71 bids, which is a great number. Uh, that's a lot of bids for those categories, which is good. The recommendation that we got in our packet that we saw is for the low bidder in all 22 categories except for one, who is, where the low bid was an incomplete bid. Um, but beyond that, all of them have been vetted and interviewed by OAK, and we've got their letters of recommendation in the packet as well. So the total package is for an amount not to exceed $26,248,882. That will come out of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund and the 2025 capital projects that we have yet to go and get this year later. And importantly, that represents about $3 million under budget that was planned. Um, I think in part that, as we understand, to credit to kind of stabilization of some prices and as, as well as increased competition with all of those bids, which are great things. There were some things that had to be scrapped from the plans in the original budget that they really wanted to do. So the district is relooking at some of those things to see if some of that savings can be put to good use in that space still. Um, we'll learn about if, if that's happening and what that looks like later. But the packages we have here is for the cost as described. We've got two pieces of mechanical work. Uh, the first one at Eastern High to replace and upsize the chiller, a storage unit. It's currently failing, it's a little bit undersized for the building as it stands now. So that was put out to bid. Uh, we received five bids recommending the low bidder for that. Right-way plumbing and heating for an amount not to exceed $1,310,750 from the 2023 capital projects, and that will be completed over the summer. The second is for Central Middle School Mechanical, which is more replacing end-of-life cycle mechanical equipment. Air handling units, ventilators, exhaust fans, and more. Also put out to bid and also recommending the low bidder, who was, again, right-way plumbing and heating. So this project for an amount not to exceed $1,603,400, also out of 2023 capital projects, also to be completed over the summer. Next is cafeteria furniture for Northern High School. Most of the furniture in there is, is 20-plus years old, uh, so that it is time. Northern High, we know on the construction schedule is slated, I think, for 2027, but this was kind of a way to infuse a little bit of, of that work a little sooner so that they can start to utilize it and enjoy it, and it's much needed over there. Cool thing about this, GMV, our, one of our partners worked with Principal McKinney and actually a group of students, 9th through 12th, over there to look at that space and design that space and think of how they could reimagine it or what, what would fit their needs best in there. Um, not surprised, they went through a lot of drafts, they were quite over budget with all of their ideas, which is very cool. Um, but it was a good, uh, process, I think, that, that they all went through, and everyone is excited about what has, uh, come out of that in budget. Uh, so the recommendation is to pick up that furniture from five different suppliers for a total cost not to exceed $371,615. That'll be again out of 23 and 25 capital projects likely. And cool thing, should be done over spring break if approved tonight. So the seniors currently, and the ones especially who, who kind of work to help reimagine that space, will get to use it before they leave. Next is office furniture for Eastern Middle School. And the construction, the addition that's going on there, uh, this is furniture to outfit the offices, the waiting areas, conference rooms, meeting rooms, et cetera, uh, using multiple purchasing co-ops as we do, and recommending Interface Interiors, uh, who we know well, for an amount not to exceed $84,200 out of 2023 capital projects. And the final two pieces here are budget amendment materials that we went over quite a bit in subcommittees. Um, and we've, we've been able to get our questions and, and, and make sure we all understand what's in this amendment over the last week. Um, I just will give a high level, I suppose. Uh, we know we passed our budget in June, uh, before the fiscal year begins, when there's a lot of unknowns, so we pack a lot of assumptions into that budget, uh, which are usually pretty good. Um, some of them this year were the contract negotiations in the district that were all still ongoing. The budget from the state was unknown at that point. Um, staffing levels, student count, all those different pieces that we, we don't know until later on after we adopt. So of course, things change, and we often come back this time of year with amendment to get, um, a revised look, an accurate look now at what our fiscal year '24, '25 looks like. So as we saw, just a couple of notable things, um, that I would point to. On the revenue side, we assumed that we would get an increase in the per pupil allowance from the state, um, as has been the, the trend. We did not, so that was dollars we assumed we would receive, and we didn't, to the tune of about $2.2 million. There's also multiple changes to everything MIPSers-related um, that, that affected our spreadsheets in multiple places and kind of evened out to about $900,000 additional dollars coming to us. We earned up, we received a little more from, uh, local, state, and federal grants. We had a, a little more interest income earned, all of those things together uh, to basically allow us to be taking in $1.275 million more than we expected when all those things are added up. So instead of about $131.5 million in revenue, the new, uh, projection is $132.8 million. So a little bit of an increase there. On the expense side, also an increase. When all of the contracts were settled out, along with reduced staffing positions, um, turnover savings, all of those, the net of that was an increase in about $4.5 million compared to what we anticipated we would spend there. Again, the MIPSers money and the past-through things that affected the expenditure side as well. All said and done, expenditures were up about $2.8 million from what we approved in, in the summer, up to $135.9 million. So in total, uh, we had planned to spend about $1.5 million more than we were going to take in. We planned to dip into our fund balance for that, uh, which would have projected us at about 17.2% fund balance to expenditures by the end of the year, which we felt good with. Uh, with the new numbers, they're now projecting we'll spend about just over $3 million from the general fund to cover expenses this year, which projects us at the end of, of June to be at 15.75% of our expenditures in the fund balance. So ultimately, um, operating a larger deficit than we anticipated at the beginning of the year, um, but money being well-spent, and we're in a, a good position from a lot of good planning that has happened before this time to be able to handle that for this year. Small changes to the Special Revenue Fund, that was all the, the general fund. You probably saw a small change to the Special Revenue Fund mainly took place with inside the Food Service Fund, where the cost of everything food service is just higher than expected. Food costs more, um, wages are higher in that space after contract negotiations, commodities, all of that to the tune of about $400,000 more than we had projected. So smaller changes in the Special Revenue Fund. But those two, uh, general fund and special revenue are in the packet. Again, we've gone over them quite a bit for us to approve tonight as an amended budget. And that is what we did at finance.
Thank you, that was a lot of information. Um, all right, is there any, are there any more questions or comments, discussion regarding our consens grouping? Okay, then can we please have you all call out?
Yes, Dr. Michaud.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBord.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon.
Yes.
Dr. Fausten.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinmeier, yes.
All right, that brings us up to our informational items and superintendent's report. We'll from who on did the next?
Okay, great, we just had the one resignation listed there, Mr. Schwander from Eastern High. That's the informational item. Uh, as far as the updates, uh, there are, there are a few. Um, the first one I wanted to acknowledge is the, um, the Title IX 2024 regulations have been vacated based on a court order and a decision. Uh, so what that means is all of these school districts, um, will be moving back to the 2020 regulations, the anticipating, um, policy revisions coming from Trun, our policy provider, um, likely in the Feb, for the February board meeting. I just had a discussion with him recently, but they, they spend a lot of time, you know, going through and making sure that they, you know, understand, you know, what was vacated and, and all of the pieces so that they give us policies that we can move forward with. So I do anticipate, uh, bringing those forward in February. Again, um, anticipating that they'll be finished at that time, so. Um, so what that means is we are now using the 2020 effective, even though, uh, we don't have those policies, we're just reverting back to recognizing where we were at. And we aren't in any investigations right now, so it doesn't compromise any of the work that we're doing. So that's good, um, obviously as well, so. Uh, I appreciate the support and me going to the MASA Midwinter Conference. It was very good, there was a lot of, uh, good information. Um, you know, some dealing with like my position directly as a superintendent, but, uh, certainly there was some, uh, learning around board communication and some of the strategies that were used in some other, uh, school districts. A lot of learning around AI, um, some really cool tools out there, and they're changing on a daily basis or every minute, however you want to put it. Uh, but there were some really great tools, uh, some legislative updates. Um, there's been, been a lot of, uh, that, and most of it's what didn't happen and why things didn't happen and so on. It's been very intriguing to watch it all. Also went to a session on, uh, using your district assets. Um, that was interesting. Uh, and then a session on legal updates, um, which there's, there's always, uh, employment changes and things like that, and then this year certainly it has not been different. There's lots of changes there. Uh, and then one of the, um, real important ones that we've actually seen now, this is a series, in the fall, uh, a gentleman by the name Matt Johnson, uh, was there. He has a organization called On Target Living, but he talks about how to take care of yourself, uh, doing that through the mental side, through the physical side, and through the nutritional side. And so, uh, some really practical things, maybe sounds a little goofy, but it really was, it really was good. And it's, uh, something that I think that could be good for, for everybody. So that was the conference. Uh, today we had a PD day, um, by all accounts, it, it was, we had a lot of good energy. It felt, felt nice. We had, uh, everybody started out today. We had all, basically all of our buildings came together here at the Fine Arts Center. Um, so not just our teachers, but our, um, office staff, parapros were invited. Just everybody that worked within the building and our transportation department as well. And so we had, you know, close to 1,000 people, um, at the Fine Arts Center. So it was a, it was a great start. Uh, everybody came in, we encouraged them to carpool because obviously all single riders, there's not enough parking spots. Uh, and then we gave raffle tickets accordingly, how people got there. If they carpool, they got two, if they came individually, they got one, and, and those kinds of things. And then we did some raffles throughout. Um, but everybody also received one of these Rangers that we spent some time in designing. Um, and I would just kind of work through this. So each of these school logos is on here. The goal is to have our employees wear these. Now, what we really want them to wear is their school IDs. That's one of the things at the beginning of the year that we said you need to do that so the students know that you're supposed to be there, because not every student knows every staff member. Um, so we put that on there, you know, in hopes that people would, uh, utilize those. And we also have on here Forest Hills, um, School District and really emphasize that even though we are Hawks, Huskies, and Rangers, we are all Forest Hills, and really, uh, the emphasis around that we are one school district. And then, um, also Relationships Matter is on here as well. So that was one of our core pieces. As far as Tier One, all students, uh, should be able to come to school and know that, uh, they are important and know that there's going to be interactions with our adults and so on. So we did a lot of, a lot of work around that. A lot of credit goes to Ryan Kimball, uh, our Director of Security, uh, who really worked, uh, to, to pull a lot of this together. Um, and I was really glad he showed up, that I didn't irritate him so much that he didn't show up, uh, this morning. But, uh, he's, he's done a great job in, in making all of that come together. We had a number of people, administrators, that helped during the day as far as presenting. Um, what we did is we emphasized the standard response protocols, which are the five actions. Uh, and again, it goes back to some of the documents that we updated and put into the teachers' classrooms, um, the different actions, the hold, the secure, the lockdown, the evacuate, and shelter. Those are all the key, key words and key actions, um, that we were emphasizing under these standard response protocols. So the goal was to be consistent and deliver a consistent message, and I think we did that, uh, very well, uh, through video, uh, through discussion, uh, through, um, direct instruction, uh, to talk like a classroom teacher. So that, that went very well. Again, we had, um, a number of raffles that really, uh, encouraged people as well. Um, the second half of, of the morning, because we had a little break and a little bit of fun, and then the second half, we spent time, uh, with our, uh, mental health liaisons, and they spoke to, uh, some of the proactive things that can be done when you're interacting with, uh, students and of course, staff. Uh, and then also some of the responsive things, because oftentimes as a classroom teacher, things don't go well, and you can no longer handle a student in a classroom, or somebody says something so egregious that it goes outside of a classroom teacher's responsibility and it goes to the office, they don't always know what happens. And so we talked a lot about, or they talked a lot about what happens once they go to the office, the social worker, um, that they have a screener. And then if the screener indicates that there's some, some cause for concern, then they would do a full BTM, um, which is, it, which is the review to see if they're a threat to themselves or others, and then there's actions that take place there. So there was a lot of conversation around that, and there were some strategies around, you know, how to make relationships with kids. Um, we really emphasized the relationship piece a lot. Uh, everybody got a box lunch as they, they went off. Um, and again, uh, there was a lot of positive interactions and, um, people, people left. Uh, basically our K6, uh, went back to the buildings to, as I mentioned, at the Curriculum Committee meeting, and they did the Trails. Trails will be the Tier One. Uh, like I said before, it was just a responsive, uh, with some of our staff doing, doing pieces, but that was... of our staff doing pieces, but that'll be our tier one for our PBIS in the elementary, so we're very excited about that, that gives access to all the materials, you had to undergo the training. And Scott's not here, but he and his department did some work because it was Martin Luther King Day, and those that do the trails didn't want to do the training on this day, so we had to really do some work to get that to happen, so we really appreciate that. And then our secondary group, basically our middle schools and high schools, primarily went to the high schools, worked together, again, the SROs being great partners and protectors and relationship builders in our district, they too were there, and they helped with the discussions, there was a lot of scenarios that were completed, I think there was five different scenarios that were created for them, that Mr. Kimball put forward, and so again, we had a consistent practice, literally went into classrooms, talked about those scenarios, people acted out what they would do if, and, you know, some of the little things, and some of the things that aren't good at all, and they actually did the practices and what their actions would be and so on. And so from that, that helps people think through some things, and think of things that, you know, they'd never thought about, and also, I was actually, I went to each of the different sites, but in the Eastern, the one teacher that was responsible for the classroom, because the rest were kids, she was talking about how even though we were doing this drill, like just the emotions that kind of changed like her actions, you know, during that, she didn't think about it, and then, you know, as she was reflecting on it, so that's the type of stuff that we, you know, need to do so that, again, if there's that time that we need to respond, we can respond in ways that, you know, are empowering and can really get, you know, a positive result. So we talked a lot about, you know, that there's stats, and then there's things that aren't necessarily kept track of. Yes, there are some stats that show that there, I think there was sixty seven school shootings that were averted, but ultimately, there's a whole lot more that are that we never know about, because relationships are built, and somebody makes a referral, somebody says something, and they hear things. But we also talked about some of the progressions that these bad actors have as they go, and there's oftentimes signs for up to nine months, and again, just talk about what some of those things were, and really tried to empower our staff also around the run height fight strategies that some have learned a little bit about, and again, that's part of what we were practicing in the afternoon time. So we have a survey that was out there, and we've already seen some of the responses, and, you know, by and large, they were very, very positive, and we're really looking forward to continuing our journey around safety. Again, we have very safe schools, and we will get better every single day, because that's just the work that we do, and things continue to evolve, so I did want to share that about the PD day. So any questions about the PD day before we move on to some of the others?
Okay, all right, and then at the end of the year, the legislative session, ultimately there were nine bills that I would share with you, there were nine bills that weren't sent on to the governor, a real big one was House Bill sixty fifty eight, which impacted PA one fifty two, not sure whether that will be signed, or if it will, there's a lot of legal review that's happening, there's a lot that is being learned about all of that as well. Overall, that's the bill that if it passed the way that it was written, it would be between eighty five, one hundred dollars per student, basically would be the cost, and it would be no additional funds for this fiscal year, and then the following year, there also was some pieces in there that would be basically at least a three percent increase. The other measure that they use, and I can't remember the acronym right now, it doesn't even exist, and so that's one of the parts of the legal review, is they were trying to compare to something that doesn't exist, so there were some real problems in the legislative process that's really being hammered out. We had mentioned around the Power School issue, that many school districts across the nation had happened, again, unfortunately, we weren't impacted by that, we were impacted by the positive actions of Power School, some of the patches and some of the updates that they did for all of us, so that happened. Bottom line, there was some geo-fencing that really protected, you know, our data and those that were protected, geo-fencing was important for that, because ultimately, this was outside of the United States, therefore it kept out the bad actors, those that didn't have that, geo-fencing had a different result, so. The CREC, which is a financial update, was very positive, that comes out in January, and that's kind of kicks off the financial, all the financial projections that create the budget. We always like to have a budget in June, sometimes we get that, sometimes we don't. State fiscal year being in October, and our starting July one, you know, causes some problems. Everything that I've heard so far is that we probably won't have our numbers by June, which is very difficult, but we'll continue to push, and all our associations will continue to push that as well, but the projections are a positive, not in a humongous way, but from what the previous projections were, as far as the revenue coming into the state of Michigan is higher, and so that definitely is good. So we are hoping that we can get an increase in the school aid fund, our school aid payments for this next school year, so. We did just get some ORS guidance, Office of Retirement Services, so that three percent that has been talked about to give our employees back, we finally were told that the end of February, towards the end of February, we will actually get the money, which is what all districts have been waiting, most districts have been waiting for, to turn around and give that money back to employees. So we're waiting more guidance on that, but we are encouraged that hopefully in the spring we'll be able to start giving back. We recognize that the fiscal year is going to be October, it'll be the state's fiscal year, not the school fiscal year, so that will give us an opportunity to pay back all of those employees that are in that retirement system, so it'll be people, basically, I don't know how many, would have to be twenty years or more, they had to make a decision way back, so that three percent would get reimbursed back to them, so basically, it's money coming in, money that's going right back out, but it is going to our employees, so that'll be a definite benefit. And then after October one, twenty twenty five, there will be no three percent taken out anymore, so that will be a blessing for school personnel, for sure, so. I would just recognize minus twenty degrees is that magic number that Mallory doesn't want to hear about, but, oh yeah, sorry, oh, my mic's empty, so, but no, minus twenty degrees sustained over time is the, and with wind chill is the temperature that we primarily look at as superintendents and discuss, so we start talking about cancellation, and the reason for that is the frostbite time is right around thirty minutes, so there's a lot to think about with that over the next couple of days, for sure, there is a weather call seven minutes ago that other superintendents are on, so after I get done with the meeting, I'll find out from that weather call what the projections are going to be as we go through the night, but certainly during a cold spell right now, so. All right, that is it, any questions? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. All right, board communications.
If you don't call it tomorrow, my kids are going to blame me now, so thank you.
That's okay, it didn't mean there's a number to pick or... Let's start with that.
I have an Equity Community Council update, if you don't have a fourth grader, you might not know, but if you do have a fourth grader, you should have gotten, okay, good, in your email, that they're going to have a fourth grade belonging bash on March sixth, and this, if you remember, GLI used to have third graders, a day of learning for and training for third graders in various things, in, under equity and inclusion and belonging. And that was a few third graders selected from each school that would go to this all-day event. Tamasha's been working very hard to make sure all of our students are included. They did a third grade mini belonging session here at the Fine Arts Center, I think it was November, early November, or maybe October, and on March sixth, they're going to have all the fourth graders from all of our elementary schools invited to this belonging bash, they're going to feed them pizza, and it is after-school hours, so please encourage all the parents of fourth graders to sign their kid up and attend, I think it's very important, really the night is about what increases belonging and what decreases belonging in schools, and that's really the focus. Tamasha's working with high schoolers across the three regions, that they're going to be putting this on, and they brought their ideas forward, and they will be working this event, we need lots of parent volunteers as well, and we're really looking forward to this being a great event for our fourth graders. And it's very timely, because after fourth grade, they go into the physics buildings, a lot of them, and so that is a transition, and they'll get to meet different people from all over the district on that night, so very excited for that.
Just got a quick update from the Foundation, Support Our Schools grant that came out of the gala raised fifty thousand dollars total, so that's being distributed to all buildings in the district in the next month or two, so that's excellent, extra dollars that principals and building leaders get to use as they see fit in their schools, and spring grant cycle's open right now, so any staff that is listening, I think it closes February second, so you have to tell that couple weeks to get some ideas in for grants, and then those will be announced in early March. That's all.
All right, the only thing I wanted to say is give another thank you out to Tower Pinkster for their donation back, and as Dr. Michaud mentioned, that is money that they apply for and they could keep for doing the things they do, and it's really, really very nice of them to turn around and to donate that back to the school district, it's very much appreciated. All right, so we're up to public comments, this time we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and we'll make your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. We still don't have a means to project, so I have to do it on my phone. All right, first up is Nixon Lamar.
Nixon Lamar, you'll find me at sixty eight, sixty Cascade Road. My speech reflects my views and not any affiliate organization. Ratings seem to be irrelevant here, but I recommend that all minors leave the room immediately. On nine twenty three, twenty four by email, Board President Fawcett wrote, "FHS libraries do not contain pornography. We have not included pornography in our collections in the past, do not have it now, and do not intend to include it in the future." This book is People Kill People by Eleanor Hopkins. You will find it in all the high schools and Eastern Middle School, available to students as young as twelve. You were nine when it happened to you. Your mother plunged into revolving door relationships with a series of shitty men, none of whom wanted to serve as your male role model. He played the game for months before going all in for the win on a weekend campout. You trusted Dean. The prelude was seduction, an arm around your shoulder in front of a campfire while he told you stories. Not afraid, are you? You shook your head, both of you, and that wasn't true. You were scared, but not for the proper reason, yet. He rolled you into the danger zone quickly. Has anyone ever showed you how to feel good? What do you mean? Has anyone ever touched you like this? He pulled you onto his lap, one arm remained possessively in control, while spare hand dropped to stroke the crotch of your jeans. You were surprised that your demeanor responded positively, still, you knew it was wrong, so wrong, and you tried to get away. Oh, no, not yet. The hand holding your grip tighter, while the other unzipped your pants and yanked them off in one swift, well-practiced motion. You struggled, but couldn't come near in matching his physical strength. He unbuttoned his own fly, freeing his sorry erection to form its way between your butt cheeks. He slapped a hand over your mouth. This might hurt a little if it's really your first time, let's see if it is. If there was one small saving grace, it was that he possessed a pencil dick. Still, when he drove it inside you, the pain was exquisite, he was screaming at those filthy pong. But you're pleased, Gary, don't wait. The wind blew sinner heavy ashes in your face, and he grunted like a hungry pig, over and over until he was finished. And when he shriveled out of you, he let you go, and he crawled away, buried the meat and hands through the dirt. You would have run, so there was no place to go. Sex is commodity. There have been many times when you needed something expensive that you straight up created sex for cash, better than giving it away for free, like two of your ridiculous girls looking for love. The guy who was supposed to take you home wasn't ready to call it a night. Take me home, please, get short after we have some fun. I don't give sex away, and you've got nothing I need. Well, I've got this. He unzipped his pants, freeing his erection, and then pushed you down on the seat, forcing himself between your legs. You were wearing a skirt, putting nothing between him and you but thin panties. You knew exactly where to find the aptly named boning knife, and in one swift motion, you brought the blade down onto his shoulder, at the same time as your foot caused scarring. Neither his arm nor his dick was going to work very well for a while. Good day.
Thank you.
Hello, Mary Bonk, sixty one hundred Sage Brook, and I just need two minutes. We know how I speak, but you know what, when it was School Board Recognition Month, I could not miss out on the opportunity to tell you all how much I appreciate you and value the opportunity to have served with you. It has been a long time since I sat on that side of the room, and I will tell you, the first time was in May of twenty twenty four, I can actually remember what I was wearing, because I think I was sweating, thinking how intimidated and overwhelmed I was, I had never been to a board meeting, and wasn't really sure I was up to the task at hand. I will tell you that over those twenty years, learned a little bit, picked up some confidence, still don't profess to know it all because we're lifelong martyrs, but there is one thing, I am one hundred percent confident, and this team of eight has all the ability in the world to satisfy the district's vision and mission, to do what's best for our kids, and to role model our guiding principles while we take care of our students and our staff and our community. So I know I'm speaking on behalf of our community, when I say thank you from the bottom of my heart, thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts, and happy serving, two minutes.
Thank you. All right, Vicki Slot.
I gladly take her extra minute. Vicki Slot, twenty four eighty nap, and I have a granddaughter in the district, so in my last letter to the board, I had three policy requests, two of which have been reversed with the court ruling vacating the Title IX twenty twenty four rules. That does leave my policy request for parental notification of students experiencing gender discord still relevant, that was my third ask. This request was effectively denied in a letter from Dr. Fawcett dated December twenty, because it redirected me away from any board responsibility, which I question. I quote in this, it said, "I again direct you to administration, and that the specifics you are hoping to find are difficult to come by, as there's not a one-size-fits-all solution." On this item of parental notification, I have to respectfully disagree. I think that I would like this board to reconsider a case-by-case management approach, and instead adopt a district-wide policy that guarantees parental notification. It would be most important and appropriate to inform a family of their children's gender discordance or wish to transition, short of known abuse. Social transition is children, in children such as name, pronoun changes, clothing, bathroom use, is a powerful psychosocial intervention, with the likely consequence of lifelong biomedical treatments as well as hormonal treatments and surgeries. Dr. Stephen Levine, a prominent expert in this area, has written that childhood transitions are an experimental procedure that has a high likelihood of changing the life path of a child, and that this comes with highly unpredictable effects on mental, physical health, suicidality, and life expectancy. I would expect the school to be very wary in playing a role in social transitions of minors. Parents hold different philosophical views on what is the best way to help their children, and I believe that choosing to always involve parents in this life-altering step would guarantee parents' constitutional right to direct the upbringing, care, and education of their children, which is a right. The board has the authority to adopt policy and our director administration to implement district-wide rules to this effect. I'm also asking this board to consider a policy giving a right to review professional development materials. I've been asking to see the training materials on Title IX since November twenty nine, twenty twenty four, without success. Moving from board policy to administrative implementation often requires training. Making these and other development materials available would advance transparency and accountability. I'm giving you a sample handout from the Wisconsin Institute of Lawn Liberty, and I seriously hope that you reconsider these two policy requests. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Right on three minutes.
I do want to try to hand that out.
Yeah, you can go ahead and give that to Val and she'll...
Oh, good. I have one copy, thank you.
And Isaac Duss.
Hello, my name is Isaac Duff. I live at eight sixty, Cranton Avenue, Michigan. I just wanted to say thank you guys for allowing for our education material and protecting our students' identities. On that note, though, the thirteen-year-old daughter, I've never spoken to her before anything like this, my thirteen-year-old daughter feels uncomfortable with the Smart Pass system. I looked into the Facebook Forest Hills group, there was a post on there, got almost three hundred comments about people who had similar experiences. The tracking is, seems to be close to gross abuse of judicial oversight, and my daughter feels that her autonomy's been pressed on. I work for the largest heart of virgins, Council Center in Michigan, and a kid with anxiety or, or just a kid with, I don't know, all issues or anything like this, this is a horrible discomfort. It is going too far against the rights. And collecting data on students has certain rights of its own. Under FERPA and I think PPCA, we do have the right to know about this information that's being collected and handoff, even if it's being transcribed to reduce identifying information. We still have the right to our children's data. In this day and age, this is more important than ever when it comes to our concerns about identity. But I just really want to emphasize that a thirteen-year-old has for her father to come speak on behalf of her authenticity, her individuality. She feels that the school, and in every other way, she is amazed with the school, she is so happy with what she receives. But this part, I've heard about this, I, I would question what students or teachers of American government would say about this. I wanted to re-judge the teachers, but I didn't want to make a fuss, I just want to come here formally, I'm informed, request this information. I want to know what's being shared, what's being given to these companies, what contracts do they hold with other third parties? You know, where is the data going? How is it being sourced? All this information, I would just like this to be publicly available. Legally, we're allowed to be involved in this conversation, we have the rights. You guys don't have to inform us of any means, I understand that, but we do have the right to have a conversation about it. So I am requesting that we do have that conversation with that information made available. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all of those who requested it. Is there any other business before the board this evening? All right, hearing that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.